All right, we call this meeting to order at 7:00 PM. We'll start with your question. We'll start with a roll call.
Mr. Ryan?
Here.
Here.
Mr. McHugh?
Here.
Here.
Mr. Cook?
Present.
Mrs. Bobbsey?
Here.
Here.
Mr. Durst?
Here.
Here.
Okay, we have everybody present this evening. Next up is adoption or amendment on agenda.
I would like to propose an amendment. During our last business meeting, we discussed the Para Pro pay and it was discussed that we can come back at this meeting and discuss where they stand with others as well as clarify some of the benefit conversation that happened in the last meeting, so I propose to add that it's be an old business. Under Para Pro contract.
Okay. Do we have any other amendments?
We have item 4 under the business, junior high.
Okay. So we'll add item E underneath business, junior high. Boys basketball.
Oh, please, Mr. Ryan, one first recommendation. Okay. Go ahead, all the girls, guys, go ahead for our number three, junior high also.
Okay, so we'll add item E. Girls, junior high. Basketball on foundation. So those two items will be removed from the twenty, from items, the 2020, 21 winter coaches recommendations.
Mr. Ryan, just to clarify, is the item E the last personnel on the consent agenda?
No.
It's a different, that's a different position. Okay.
All right. Do we have any other amendments to the agenda? Okay, I'll look for motion.
Mr. President, I'd like to make motion to amend the agenda for the authority of meeting consent.
What sort of work?
We have motion by Mrs. McHugh, supported by Mrs. Bobbsey. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carrying. Next up, item five is the consent agenda.
Under the consent agenda this evening, you are approving the minutes from the regular meeting, special meeting, and closed session of September 28, 2020, the closed session meeting of June 22, 2020, and closed session meeting of May 18, 2020 as presented. You are also approving general fund bills in the amount of $253,411.73, and AP payroll checks in the amount of $18,127.6 for a total of $271,538.79 with checks numbered 65471 through 65567, and ACH transfers in the amount of $457,889.54 for a total of $729,428.33, and check numbers 65522 and 65538 voided. Syncing fund bills in the amount of $145,135.52 with check number 40024, no checks voided, and additional bills in the amount of $9,367.65 with check numbers 65568 through 65572, no checks voided. Under personnel, the retirement of Ladonna Tivito, bus driver, hiring of Memphis employees, Robin O'Neal, junior senior high para pro, Joe Romaine, seventh grade girls basketball coach.
What sort of work?
We have motion by Mr. Cook, supported by Mrs. McHugh. You approve the items on the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carrying. Next is reports, we're gonna start with Mr. Bailey is here this evening to present the final audit. Thank you.
Everybody, I want to have a copy of your annual audit report that I want to show for you tonight. Paul Bailey, just to close your name. Okay, is that better?
That's better, yeah.
Again, everybody should have a copy of the annual audit report in place. I also handed out a presentation that I'll review. And if you know, you can track it out from each year to do your annual financial audit. A little different cover this year. We are program merged, we have a January 1st firm called Way to Live. And basically, this same audit team has been drawn, been drawn in. We're still reporting, we're still specializing in government, county, and school districts. Just not with more resources to provide, we're all personalized. So pretty much everything is stayed the same. Normally, we come out, we spend about a week onsite. This year, we did it a little bit differently. We did it more remotely through our office. Your staff is very good at sending us stuff, their basket back, their work back, and it worked out pretty well. We're doing most of our audit remotely now there and so, you know, it's just a time to learn. So everything on, so if you have this presentation, we'll just kind of go through that. One of the first things in your audit report on pages one and two is something called an independent audit report. It's a report, we're giving a big number in your financial statement that's represented in accordance with general side of accounting principle of government and office stakeholders. You have what they call unmodified or prima vision that Mr. Stride is driving toward. After you approve it, they will send it to the Michigan Department of Education. Ironically, we have to file it, and they look for that unmodified, I think that's what they're looking for when they receive a report. The next one, we're gonna spend a lot of time with, I just wanna touch on something called a management discussion and analysis letter, about a six or seven page letter in that report. It kind of just helps the reader understand the financial statement, it follows some very summarized information. We'll talk a little bit more in detail in that report. There's what they call the basic financial statements, it really includes up the financial statements in the report, that's what they call the district wide financial statements. And that includes all assets that belong to the district, include buildings, any mortgage you own, any retirement that you own, and the commercial side of financial statements regarding school issues. The fund based financial statements on page 12 through 16 are traditionally schools have reported probably for the last forty, fifty years. And that's kind of what it's been built for that time. And then there's a lot of what they call notes to the financial statements. A lot of that relates to the reader to get a better understanding of how when everybody's like whole together, some of your county policies and so forth. Roman, you from four, if you look at the district wide, you're sitting in that position, your bench is snapshot of the district as of June 30, 2020. You'll see, starts off with your assets. One thing I want to point out here, if you look at the audit report, you'll see one thing says down towards the bottom of page, unrestricted, and you'll see the negative fifteen million, five hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. The reason I point this out is that's pretty common for school districts. If you look up a poll, that includes your portion of the pension liabilities of the investors program, and then that old debt liability, you put those two together, that's about nineteen point four million dollars. So if you added that back, it would not be a negative. Again, it's pretty common for a school district, almost every school district in the state of Michigan, because the debt stuff, we look at it from a commercial side. But Cochran Bay and Troybridge really don't look at it in commercial side. If you go to page two, this is the way on your records is presented. You'll see addition as of June 30, 2020, you had assets of $2,583,0379, liabilities of $856,664, with a fund balance as of June 30, $1,726,715. The next, that would be there, what's called a statement of revenues, expenses, and changes of fund balance. For the top, you take this year, your general fund took in eight million, six hundred and thirty-three thousand. You spent five million, wow, that's a title on this. The title there. That is transition, the expenditure, the expenditure is eight million, five hundred and twenty-three thousand. Revenue over expenditures, a hundred and nine thousand, seven hundred and twenty-three thousand. Revenue over expenditures, a hundred and nine thousand, seven hundred and twenty-three, which is the curve. Which is a percent of two percent of your annual expenditures, almost, and it's a little better than thirteen. We always include some graphs for you, if you can turn to page four. It says, official figure, your general fund revenue come from, measure where your salary comes through the state. This year, it's been last seventy-three percent of the general fund budget came from state sources. Next largest piece, the global source of twenty percent, property assets, things like that. Federal piece was five percent, and your inter-district sources, Teresa, about two percent. The next piece, so it does the same thing, with your general fund expenditures. It breaks it down into major categories. This year, you've spent about sixty percent of your annual general fund budget on what they call instruction. There, you just need to pieces with a percentage, and they stay pretty consistent, instruction, you know, nineteen, it's thirty-nine percent. Pretty consistent from year to year. Final graph that we included there, is just a line graph that shows your revenues and expenditures from the last five years. You see they've been going up for the last four years, and then dropped a little bit, and quite a little bit over revenue expenditure. But again, revenue is receiving expenditure. If we go back to page two. We have received what they call fund balance. If you give your break on it, as I said, as of June 30, 2020, full fund balance of one million, seven hundred and twenty-six thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. There's four classifications, there's what they call the non-spendable of eighteen thousand, eight hundred. That's money that you put aside, you already paid bills for eighteen thousand, eight hundred, so you can incorporate it against the employee. Committed fund balance is two hundred and seventy-eight dollars, two seventy-two. You've always set aside, accrued vacation, sick, made your employees from vacation to sick, and whatever that liability is, you show as committed. Your unassigned fund balance there, you'll see one million, one ninety-five, four fifty-four. And there's a break down there, down under number two. That includes a hundred thousand dollars for the buses, capital improvements to a hundred and twenty. And then when you adopted your 2021 budget to anticipate it, you know, nine hundred and seventy-five thousand, four hundred and fifty-four dollars. So you pull that out, so you can incorporate it again. And that left your unassigned fund balance of two hundred and thirty-four thousand, twenty-nine, in all, in all those categories, total of one million, seven hundred and sixty. Number three there, just gives you a percentage of your fund balance in relation to expenditures this year, was just about twenty plus three percent of your annual expenditures. And the rule of thumb, I remember, is somewhere between, you know, ten and twenty percent of your annual expenditures, so you're doing very well. On the next, page three, there's what they call special revenue fund, this is your food service fund. This year, you're given three hundred and five thousand, nine hundred and one dollars, spent three hundred percent of it. So you had expenses over revenues of six hundred and twenty-three dollars. The next item, best service funds, you'll see, you'll have two debt service funds that you would use to pay off debt. You levy taxes, and you pay off your debt mileage, and you can see the revenue expense. And the money is totally distributed for debt payments. Also, sync, and the next category is capital projects for your syncing fund. This year, your syncing fund took in two hundred and forty-four thousand, five hundred and twenty-one. And you spent three thousand, six eighty-five, so you have revenue over expenditures of twenty thousand, eight thirty-six for the year. That's a real quick synopsis of the numbers, there were a couple letters in the back of your report that are on use. I'd like a question. The first one, what they call independent audit report on the chart, it's a big heading at the top. When you come into your audit, when you do it remotely, everything that we do, not only audit these numbers, but people who are accountable, how do you record it, how do you pre-engage, who gives the invoice on the agenda, how is the check, who signs the check, who deals the check, just things like that. And thank you for cash proceeding, same thing to table. And we become aware of what we call unique visits that require to communicate to the board, can't be restored, this is your own material weaknesses, and that is letters that we're going to share with you. Second letter, there, you're using the letter, because CP departments aren't required to come to a meeting like this. This just kind of just explains to you whether we get any difficulty during the audit, as I started off, everything went very well, especially since we had to do a lot of it remotely. There, through the process, the whole background, your staff, but everything went pretty well when we gave that letter. There's a couple things attached to the back, every talk, after we finish the audit, we pull it all together. And we have a meeting with your superintendent, the meeting manager group. And we go through it page by page, and talk about each of the numbers in detail. And sometimes, sometimes we give you some recommendations, and then we just attach it to the back of the report. Does it need questions like a number that we want to record, just to answer at this time?
I expect the operation and maintenance expense shift was due to the closure in March. Is that? When you look at the charts, for the operation and maintenance, we were, we reduced from ten percent to seven percent as part of the expenditures this year. Is that due to the closure, I would expect? Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Bailey? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, we do have a, do you need a motion to the audit report?
I would, I would make the motion to approve the audit report for 2019, 2020 as presented by Paul Bailey of UHYI.
We have motion by Mr. Cook, supported by Mrs. Bobbsey. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carrying. Okay, we'll continue on with reports. Audience administration submitted their detailed report. We'll start with Mr. Oki, if you wanna pull out a couple of items, and then we'll see if the board has a question for you.
Hello, everyone, can you see everybody? We can see everyone. As you said, Mr. Ryan, yeah, we detailed everything out. We have a couple highlights from the fall season, the fall season, just go to that. Notice our cross country team, they're trying to, they're remote, fantastic, we're saying more than the and our cross country team come down, another person, we might have whatever, to meet with them also, we're excited about that. We also had a senior runner, Dr. Carlson, he finished first place, recognized at all time. And so with that, his siblings and sisters, our partner, our partner, Carlson, so. We're very proud of them, they competed this past weekend around the same three group, three regional trial. They actually nominated him to that whole team, and then they actually lost this week in Almanac. We really also tried to manage the state, I think we were very scared of you, so. They're, I think they did a speed team last year, and their termination, our library issue, so maybe just states. We're really proud of the boys on that, and our cross country program, soccer team, they were the seven official champions. They, that's a pretty good team, I haven't been there, Saturday, my mother's gonna play, they're probably not soccer team, I was listening, but our team definitely competed, they are, our boys came to the final at the district final on Saturday. We're very proud, we're thrilled to be able to voice them down. The last four years, it wasn't too tight, it was in the district championship. So the team has developed a very highly acclaimed leadership. And as I said, football's going to end tonight, we've got some success, and the manager, J.B., is trying to come out now, go more competitive for them, and we had my mind, the students, I have a half a football, and everyday attribution, we were winning six, seven, and that, so. Today, we have a back position night, so we can contribute to the football team, and then we can have that, so. I know they did a great job to convince the group that they can get your games. They did some really exciting games, go to local, fantastic, and also done a great job, J.B., and then Junior High, which have developed, yes, and future, so. There are all those teams that come to that, some particular varsity, university team that I, I heard, I did this Friday. Just a little briefing, that's a road test, state didn't come out on Friday, they were, and we're planning to move forward with sports, go to the start. On times where our routine for high basketball, I should start practicing around seventy-three, and maybe we did, at the league, we get that last week, they decided to move that swing. Junior High wrestling league in spring, so they will start on February 22nd, and we over, so she will be over by the great break, which is at March. So our plan is to get Junior High to work basketball, then Junior High to basketball, then Junior High wrestling. And wrestling sports, which is a phase starting. The only things the state really did say, if you were kind of going back to the work, maybe a fall, they released ball sports for games, to take for athletes, no possession indoors, and to have oh, I don't think they're gonna have wrestling tournaments for high, for all the format, a lot of those are right now, which is hot, there's no more teams for course, basketball, so. Right now, everything I'm having before, we have APB, and insurgents, we're trying to, but the board, hopefully we'll be more information. Right now, the pandemic is in work, we continue to develop, caution that we have, all sorts. We're a lot of our coaches, our players, and our parents, not to move the tents, it gives it for some, we've, I feel, also in that, portion, very good job. Our half the shots, so we, on health question here, our parents have done a great job, being responsible, and they're very good, dependent, they're concerned. Most of you not saying that, as you may have known, so. We're very well there. I advise on how the sports are supposed to start. I think I made a mistake, compared to chair again, momentary. And the last thing is physical, the outdoor, the annual facility, so that we broadcast our game, and we want to lock the F2J facility. But definitely handy for our grandparents, friends, families from out state, and all those, that, that came in. They were supposed to be there last week, they were so far behind, and you didn't, kind of that Brian, Brian's here now, but Brian's done a great job for me, that's why, physical, I'll be out here on the November 21st. It's a step along, so, first thing about that, that's all I have.
Thank you. Any questions for girl Oki? All right, thank you. Anything for maintenance transportation? We got several items in here, Mr. CJ, you don't have to go through every one of them, but there's anything they want to bring up directly?
Um, I guess, just obviously, we did a retirement, it was a very creative, uh, experience. A lot of days, really, these days with the example, and whatnot, so, we leave the, we leave the house, and although it's still going to happen, I'm tired of it, but I, I'm glad to be out. And I don't know, for ourselves, well, most days now, but that, because of what we need is the stuff. The, and as we go into the school year, I bet, the asses have really been a difficult, difficult course for us. So starting out, breaks around, now with your ass, now with the point of your ass in the morning, and a lot of them, we can't leave for school. So, they, we're working without a mask, at least, we're working without a mask, not a mask right now. So, I have, I have a, a medication that will, it's not really an actual, our, our, our life, and we're going to be in my mind is conditions, so, if ever, resources that will buy my, 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 probably, well, the masks are in this year. So, we're just in there, and I would like to say this, and those. Drive, we would re-hop, they come back, remember you stick one of their ones, wait on their half area, wait on the, wait on the front of the bus. We go through electric space, we're supporting the entire bus, we take a separate bus to that. So we drop that one off, and then they pick up the regular bus, we take normally, the kids at youth school ride the larger bus, and probably these X train bus all the time. We get a lot of, a lot of kids coming back from busing, and we were not busing originally, and then they come over, today, or we're gonna be, there's a, so. And they get a bus, and they're inside, and now that they're gonna start setting one of the buses, and that, we get them to, drive them in, and so we're getting a lot more busters once again. Well, I've got a little bunch of heating units, obviously, through the dirty, and I don't want to do schools, so we start along with all the heating units. A few that were not in motion quite correctly, so they were running a lot more, and maybe you do, they're like, they're getting a lot more, or they're gonna be, they're gonna be, well, they're completely, we replace those. Our school do a program is somewhat functional, has that on to, on online, the administrators have, the rest guys, we started. Putting in a few board orders, just to try to work out a lot before we get out with teachers, so we know exactly how, or what has to be entered into it, so we can portray the stat basically, so, and that's something that we will roll down, all teachers, and that'll be, we're starting to roll the boards.
Mr. CJ, so, let's talk about the mask that's here on the buses, so, the bus driver arrives to a home in the morning. I would imagine I would, I would imagine, if his child goes onto the bus, and a mask, the bus driver gets the mask, and puts it on. So, that kind of makes sense. So, but when they're leaving school, they would have to have on, they'd have to have the mask on in the school building, so somewhere between the school building and the bus, they're leaving the mask? Are we finding masks all over the campus?
I don't know, I don't see a few here today.
I've got the mask, and that's from, I'm, it's mostly, like, in the, that's what I have in.
We don't know how, we may have, or, or, yeah. I think they try, like, the officer, they, they don't, they don't, they got a must, no, no, there's you, uh, they, since they got a must, come around down to their seats. They call it now, if they must, right, they still, like, the officer, they're not, they're, they're, they're. Well, they have stuff, so, we'll, we'll do, so, we're giving the, now, we get a lot of, we're giving the, so. If you weren't, uh, this is, this is, uh, in the year. We wish, I, I, we, we, we had. A lot of the kids, they didn't have their vice prepared today, since our secretary sent a lot of the achievement out there today, so, their parents, they, they, so.
Is this during their senior year?
Yes. Yeah, I'm not sure, it's, it's, they're not going to, here.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, thank you.
We talked about, the kids, starting to find the law, so, we have, and, they, 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 the lots are out.
We had two or three buses that were, uh, had to play, and once we went down, and, one was the director, retired a lot, so, I need to, I need a lot of these ones. And then, the same day, I said that, before, if, if, remember, the bus this year, all of a sudden, the bus, we had to, we had to, actually. So, how we, I, I, how we need to keep the social systems on the bus, was we, having, we see where we're at, and semester, we stay, well, how, how, and, so, stay versatile. If they stay versatile, and we build out avenues, but if they all come back to school, and that, like, avenues, and they have to try to hide, like, the driver, and, uh, we all know, it's like, so.
Mr. Cujan, have you spent much time making up the work with the bus driving?
Oh, sorry?
Have you spent much time making up with the bus driving?
Right, right.
Are you having any difficulties with, like, maintenance, or anything like that, or some trouble to, on top of that, or anything that, that need a, a help, to be combined?
You know, it's been a huge help, I hired the, the master facilities, we have a lot of these, those, this year. They're there the day of, we're cleaning, so that's been a huge help, so, it hasn't been nearly much for her. Because I thought, one day, yes, ours, they said, yes, like, well, we get to the same day, and might get the next day, or the day after, but it's not. Not as bad as the seat, we get to, just, and, well, it's, it's going, fortunately, we're ready for the second, so.
Anything else, Mr. Cujan?
He said that, the mask, is there any supervision, or, we give you the schools with the bus, if they take the bird off their masks, and the bus starts itself?
Well, they always do, you know, they have to put a knee on the bus, that's sitting there watching, they did. And so, I, I, you know, there's different brands outside, people outside, so, if you're, if you're, you know, on the outside, so, they walk out of the building. But if you buy it from their pockets, or, traction, you know, is, you know. Well, I don't, we figure, well, it's a choice, guys, we're, our parents are sitting there, they don't have it, you know, that, that, that was, and, you know, I was like, okay, okay. And, you know, so, it's not, it's, our parents even, that, our, the native, they bring up, asking, okay.
Does this, Cujan, want to, so, become the regular driver, who did that night, uh? Uh, right now, is it your driving, like, too?
Well, I think mostly, because of early games, early mistakes, and stuff like that, today, we don't, we don't, our, our. She would like to stay on our tag, because earlier, she does have another job, if necessary, she says she would, or. So, look, I would be the student, behind, I, 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 I.
Thank you, Mr. Cujan.
Thank you, everybody, welcome, thank you for having me here tonight, I'm glad to see you, we're facing, again, a little square, and on my computer, but, I'd see it here. Just a couple of things I want to point out on the report, I won't go into everything, because there's a lot of stuff here. Um, I did include a few different things in there, uh, a few, a little bit of data, if you can check out, uh, your, uh, you can, there's a little links in there, to some, map data, from our W E B A. Testing, also, law, your data, um, I want to point out, on that map data, uh, Mr. Corbin and I were looking through that. Not too long ago, when we saw, um, something that was kind of important to buses, and normally, when you, when you go through. In the, in the fall, when you, particularly, you see a drop off, um, in the year before, from students, um. It's just kind of natural, it's a natural drop off that you see, um, but, but this year, we were able to, notice the bus from fall nineteen, to fall twenty, we, that, or, exceeded our old expectations, and all, at all grade levels, and seventy-eight, one, one grade level. Um, and, um, another thing to know, uh, when you look at that, those numbers, is that, um, it is, they're all the same for work groups, so when you see twelve, or, that's, that's. Ten graders, you know, since fall twenty nineteen, fall twenty twenty, ten graders now, there are nine graders last year, that's still the same for groups, they're all the same, yeah. So, it's, it's pretty good, uh, it's a pretty good analysis, so, I want to, our teachers, that are, they're at least in P L C. We had half a group, was there some co-teaching, or, the other half was looking at that, N W E B A data, and they're, they're very impressed, so, we were very impressed with the teaching. That occurred, um, all of our COVID break, we were out, um, which shows that there was a lot of real teaching, ready going on, even despite I'm here, and, to be back. As you started right away, I think our teachers, just, did a really great job, so, they were excited to see it, which I'm talking about, what we're going to do moving forward. Uh, one of our plans is to use the back of the wall, cafeteria, to create a map, uh, N W E B A map, that ball. Being by one of our seniors from lower the hole, uh, to track our scores for the year, by grade level, kind of have a little contest between grade levels, uh, you know, kind, disco, P V S, and there as well, so. We're excited about that, um, and, and, I'm hoping, and I was chatting today, when it started, uh, so, maybe by the next meeting, we can have something with their field again. So, um, if you take a look at that, when you get them in here, too. Um, we missed their, all right, I think you were asking about, uh, staff survey, information, and that's in the link, also, there for you. We're talking a little bit about, um, staff stress levels, also, staff, um, feelings about wearing masks. About colleagues who don't wear masks, students who are wearing masks appropriately, and students who don't wear masks, so there's some information there, I, I put it there for you. Uh, and also, also, that information leads to, to our, um, our P L C, uh, for our staff to look at. One of the things we know about that is, is a, it's not a place we have to start to talk about today, is the mask tracker. Uh, some of the teachers were upset about, maybe some students repeating, uh, repeatedly, not wearing masks appropriately, your school day, so, we can, with the mask tracker, um, spreadsheet. We're still working on some of the kinks in that, as far as how, what, when, a thing, you know, needs to, uh, attract those students that are, uh, reminders throughout each day. And they develop a certain number of reminders, and they can also, open areas, and, and progress from there. Um, the last thing we want to do is to stop the poor, not wearing masks. Like, you're saying, sometimes, when you walk through the hallway, you see a friend, a basketball, slowly slip out, you know, below the door, and it's. And then, Mr. Corbin and I, we're conscious, it's a simple, just asking the kids, can you do this now? It's just like that, the kids know what that means, and they're going to pull it up. Um, so, so, yeah, we want to give everybody, yeah, but, obviously, as you mentioned, it's not a deal, for all the store masks all day, I mean, um, I think you agree with that, but, that's a, a lot of the, we're going to call it, like, but, man, it's a place, we must, we must do this, so. That's something we're looking at, and, some of that data, is, uh, how we got to, um, we got to the mask tracker. Uh, some of the things in there, uh, to look at there, teacher survey, uh, data, from, uh, from our, uh, staff, and they enjoyed it, that's some information, there's some parents, who really enjoyed telepathizing. We're looking at, maybe having a hybrid of that, if we ever get back to face to face, we have a hybrid, maybe, scheduling, your staff are coming in, and, and, face to face meetings, so, let's stay true for that. Um, and then, just a couple of things out there, you see our accounting numbers are there, all this weekend, it was very well received, to, to teachers, and students that really love another month's day, or even week, would be amazing, so, maybe. Uh, so, uh, we're looking forward to that, maybe towards the spring, I, uh, and then, we did talk about, um, Mrs. O'Neil, uh, she's an area, one of our seniors, she is. She's a favorite freshman, on the junior high side, has done an amazing job, and also, Miss Lena is, uh, now, supervises on the cafeteria in the morning from seven thirty to eight, before she starts her job with, with her students. So, she's been here, we take care for, um, we, the air force tomorrow. That's all I have, if you have any questions?
Mr. Ralph, you mentioned in the survey, there were two, two teachers, about a twenty-four, mentioned, they didn't feel there was enough P P E.
Yes.
If, if, just, is there, is there a perception, and that's something you can add to the staff, that you can hear where it's at?
I would believe, so, I don't, I don't think it's primarily a perception, because, Mr. Cujan, as our, as our, both sides compact, so, I got, I got, even actually, we got more, more, with, like, with the scrays, and, and masks, and shields, and gloves, that we can, we can, uh. We can use right now, I mean, we need it, of course, but, um, I didn't really get into that one, that much, with the staff, because it's a low number, I think it made it way, a lot of perception, and actual, you know.
Yeah, I, I try to get up there, and try to make sure they know where it's at, and that's something easily correct.
I mean, it is in both staff rooms, it is in a lot of offices, uh, it's a map here in our, in our receiving areas, so we've got stuff all over, so. I haven't, haven't had any staff, um, that, have, have, uh, have anything they needed, they need something, we have a lot of recommendations for masks, from, uh, I think, Florida, G M D, especially, the white masks. Our price, I believe it was, uh, some, 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 shields, all kinds of, so we even have, uh, uh, scrays, and, and, I, there's, spray bottles, you name it, yeah.
And then, it's fifty percent of the staff still felt, not quite comfortable, they, they put the unsafe line.
What was it?
Uh, it's, off the safety, and, and, it's for fifty percent said, or fifty, eighty, so, I don't think that's a challenge.
Oh.
And there were some areas that happened, to the, like, on this, of their room.
Well, uh, there was a few that felt that, uh, you know, if you look back, um, some of them felt that, uh, the lounge, at the staff lounge, were, were being cleaned, there's just two that felt that, um. Some of them, they trust their colleagues, you know, a feeling, it's a gamble, I mean, the, the staff lounge, that's something, Mr. Cujan, I talked about, um. One thing we do have, we do have a couple of rooms on both sides that are open, that those staff, they can use, if they, if they feel uncomfortable in the, uh, staff lounge, there's a whole room here, over their classroom, if they, if they wanted to, um. There was one other thing you mentioned. Uh, you know, the other, one other thing that really jumps out to me, is, um, you know, when you look at, the numbers are, it's sixty-two percent, although, but really, top twenty-four people total, so. And some of those little squares, that's one, those little slices, that's one person, and those things, too, so, you know, you got to take into consideration, everyone's feelings, of course, um. And you got, you got one here that doesn't feel safe, with students that don't wear masks, and they understand, you know, the same thing with those staff, so. It's, it's kind of, uh, you know, it's, it's tough for all of us, I mean, I know the staff did a great job of, of directing students in the right way, they also did a great job of, of, uh, supporting each other, helping each other out. In cases where, maybe, I'm asking, race, run, the hallway, someone runs, run out, and he's just a merger, this is, I also, this, this is, uh, kind of, what you see, struggling, trying to hold outside, or, or, mask, and, you know, so, that's, 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 yeah.
Mr. Craft, I respect the map, for a moment, for one, congratulations to you, and your team here, for some excellent growth, even during COVID. Um, my question is, just the eighth grader here, is this a, not having the eighteen-nineteen data with, is this, um, is this a continuation of, or, is this something you've seen for the first time, back?
Um, that group there, um, has, if I recall correctly, now, I don't, I don't throw it up on the bus, or anything, but, I think when they came, when I started off this year, there were a little, a little projections there. Um, and that's one of the groups that we really focused, uh, this last year, one of the, one of the groups we talked about, in our, in our P L C, uh, asked me, how do we give this group, you know, up to where it's supposed to be, I, it's, it's, uh, on, is this, is that? This is more of a, um, mindset of them, that they don't take it seriously, that it comes down to these tests, uh, because, it's not the safety of the classroom, you know, with, with the normal workplace. When it comes to the N W E A test, we see this little drop off, in the classroom, the teachers, the, the, we talk about how good they, they perform. So, we're thinking it's more of a mindset, and maybe attitude thing, uh, they're a little fight group, uh, they are, they are a good group, um, so, we're hoping that by, uh, spring, I'm not sure, in spring, we see them meeting the expectation, which at that time, there's their expectation, we're hoping they meet now.
Great, so the grades, their grades in class don't necessarily reflect.
Yes, yes.
Okay, great, great, thank you.
Uh, hello, Ron, is this the charge you're talking about, meaning, the back?
Uh, no, 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 what we're probably, I'm doing, is taking something similar to this, and, what more if you put, the idea would be to put their, uh, fall twenty-twenty, mean, of it. So, um, see this second box there, it would be their fall, which, they basically would be competing with themselves, uh, throughout the year, so that's why they're putting against each other, because they can't really compete against each other. Uh, we, we had their, the sign, the grade level, the bottom, scores, the sign, uh, and painted their first, uh, scores, and then, the teachers that go through, in the state class, they set goals for the classes. Okay, we will set a goal for them, and then, they can, the, the, and, uh, winter did, we would add on top of that, so, for example, this was, this is great painting, winter was start period. So, they'd be competing with each other, and the eighth graders, okay, they, our targets, they go from, you know, two sixteen to, to two twenty-two, and then, we would reward their classes, they go.
And the next testing is in January, right?
Yes, usually, late January. Maybe even early February. So, the last one would be in May.
And, uh, you shared the walking data with us also, is that, uh, something that, you know, you'll sit down, or you have sat down with the staff, and you go through that?
Yes, and we did do that as well. So, we, we did go through that as well, our, our P L C, uh, and basically, it gave the stash out of the, of the, uh, you know, crap, I go in, and I go in, I have a little, I go in, I'm not sure, you know. I'm not sure, thanks, as I see them, the water, I'm tempted to, again, I'm not really seeing all these things, but I tell them, I told them, say, now, I would be, maybe, you know, maybe three, or, maybe, uh, two or three, basically, inside the classroom. Um, and then, we talk about, you know, some of these things, if you look, um, for example, on the, second, domain two, domain two D N S, um, managing student behavior, all right? Um, and it looks like, if I observe, the ones who is higher than, the loose ones, because you didn't observe, well, that's not a good thing, if you're not, not observing, the teachers, managing behavior, then there's no behavior, you know, I mean, that, that's how I look at it, as, are you, or, are you someone, or, you're asking someone to, to follow an expectation? to, to follow an expectation or something like that? So, um, we did go through and talk about these. And we discussed, initially, when we first started this, a couple years ago, teachers were worried, oh, no, I've got too many red one, but it doesn't always mean they're bad, which means, but I didn't see who directed something, that's a good thing, because you don't have to worry. Um, and then we get to, for example, domain four, there's a lot of, uh, areas where we might not, I might not see a teacher reflecting in the practice of five minutes, or they're not going to be sitting in the desk, putting up a grade book all day. You know, sitting reading, you might not see those little more room. Uh, we did talk about, uh, the fact that distorted practices, there were more reds, which I would like to see more in the classroom. There are some things that you won't see in the first five, whether in the five, ten minute period, there's still, uh, some, some teachers do a classroom in the start period. If I were to come in to help me through, I would miss that. Again, small, I'm trying to come to where you're studying, from our behavioral issues, I don't see that, that's kind of a good thing. I do see it, that's great, because in, uh, what they taught, that's also a good thing if I don't see it. And, um, one that we, we did talk a lot about was the use of distorted language, which I'd like to see how far up we talk about that often. We were working on the language, I have TVs and TPS, so still. So we're working on, it's a whole complete switch. If you've been teaching something for twenty years, you're deciding, I thought we're having certain practices that I know we've done for almost two years, and it's still the tough, it's, it's a tough switch to make. Our teachers do do it now, but, and we, we continue to work on it, so. It's just something to talk about. Um, this round, I did more morning. You can tell I did a lot, each year eight to ten. The next round, I'll probably go in the afternoon. And then, um, I'd like to leave a lot of orders throughout the day, all the time, so I should try to get a little bit of everything. I, I tried to get, for example, I don't want to see, you know, the same person too many times in the same hour. Sometimes it works out that way, but I can try to miss them. So hopefully, my first round was through the morning, next round will be in the afternoon. And then Mr. Corbin Lawson's been doing some, uh, lockers in the second round, he's introduced, especially, I think he's been doing, uh, especially lockers.
Thank you for sharing our data.
It's a lot of this, though. I'll go ahead. If you have any questions, you know.
So, uh, so, um, I really want to focus on the evening was the learning loss that occurred in WA. Um, eventually, my teacher and I spent a lot of time that I, we've been doing it, and one thing that we noticed nationally at the WA is that our realist learners lost the most, um, which, you know, when you think about elementary education, this isn't surprising because it's not really there just yet, there's still being to home and learning. So, um, we noticed that our ALC's learners are, given our, during COVID, we were not distributors, and our first graders and second graders, um, sustained their greatest loss. Um, you can see that in the chat. Um, that, um, most of the loss was in mathematics. So what we did after learning that was we gave these first graders a Delta S two year, um, first students second grade through fifth grade, and they're the lengthest information of what that Delta S two year is. Um, Delta takes some time, because they got writing, it's the end of the students need in order to, um, to gain that knowledge, they need the, um, the extra years. So we looked at that data, the Delta S two year, and then we individualized our points for each student, and for each grade level. And for each semester, we might differentiate, um, depending on the class, the entry level. Um, we were advised to fill in those gaps that maybe more of us, because they're related during our virtual learning time. So we have plans for the entire class. And then, I'm not going to go today, because our, our students, and everybody just started playing in that, or doing that extra sports, um, and as well, in some other groups, and we're also building in that school group, um, across the board. It's, uh, um, we'll retake that S two year again in January as well, in the LWA. Um, but it also wasn't surprising that our focus, um, that we have the scores in that, because reading in the LA is just typical, if these are in for a, if they, we hope, or talk to, you know, and kind of some of the things that are happening in that, there are a lot of parents, um, to do with your short method. So, um, we're working on the, the information. Uh, so our parents as well, um, creating videos to share, um, some of the skills that students need. Also, for that unity, um, we purchased a program called CAPPAS, there's this app, or for a program that virtual learners are doing, it's an intervention and intervention program. So what teaches the students, who are at school, and what teaches them how to have it in the LA and in the US. So it, it, we make the individualized first student, and the student will be spending some time in that, uh, during our event time as well. And also that all the information will go to our virtual learners, because, um, you don't have to be able to have that at home to work out with individualized individuals as well. So that's something that we'll continue to work on, and we'll continue to honor. The development of, of, of school-based strategies and, um, products and tools of choice, we'll continue to watch those kids in therapy, um, as needed. Another thing we have to report, I'll just touch on briefly, um, with those, that survey, we're very proud of that, I'm sure being, it's definitely, it means we're going well. Um, I know I talked about some of our teachers are working, and it's still very, very true, they're spending so much time individualizing instruction, differentiating between learners, and really, not only do they affect each other, how can they be, with social, social needs, that, um, just not being in school for someone? They're not just for students, but their families as well. We had our eighteen teams on Friday. Um, we had fifty-two students, which is about half of the usual, usually, you know, twenty-eight students, so, um, we spend a lot of time speaking with, um, students, you know, families, and all kinds of, of course, things, you know. They have a question there a little bit, uh, our offering, it's very busy. And we're really continuing to focus on skills, you know, our mental health, um, which we gave very explicit, uh, learning target, they can show the student about today, what they would like to receive in the hospital, and, uh, they're available, a lot of information in there. Um, if you're going to type it through it, I think we've got a lot of links in there, um, with information on some of those programs that we're using. And then I'll answer any questions if you want.
Susan, you said that, um, the LWA time centers would be available to the parents at home?
Um, we have that program that we have, so, but we have our eighteen teams, we have more, uh, access at home, and, and it should work behind it at home, and we will, and at home, at all parents, at home. Um, and I tried to figure it out, and it lost my way a little bit, so, you know, with the, the, the day I was at, I always send a message here. Um, so we have a program that all students access, they have their, for, on elementary age. And they'll just, um, little, you have ways of, I can, for all of them, and separate it by LA. There's levels to the high, so just please go on in, if you need. Uh, the LA map specifically, um, they're mentioning these, um, the root floor, and what areas they need, um, to have intervention and or intervention, and it has so many skills. They're great work. But the thing about kids at school and those that are, um, were working, which they almost don't have chance to. And I also do teach a bunch of reports about, um, how many students are, who are working, if they like manual intervention, um, if they don't, if they deserve, well, I'll take them to math, which we teach that, those, um, for, it's a very, very important part of that.
Thank you.
Mr. Hankins, do you have data, um, fall nineteen to fall twenty? Only because, you know, when I think about winter twenty to fall twenty, you've got, winter twenty, you've got kids in school for a while. So you might expect a little, uh, you might expect a bigger drop from your winter twenty twenty to fall twenty twenty, when you had COVID plus summer.
So they're dropping like January, by the way, September, January.
Fall of fall, so fall, fall nineteen to fall twenty. Have we looked at those?
When you said, there are many, I was in high school, remember, I was around it often? Um, she could adjust for the, you know, these little terms this year? And she could adjust for that, they use this, and I, 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 I,
I'd be interested in the fall to fall.
Sir, is there anything about fall to fall? What do you have in mind?
I, I would just like to see it, just, I, I, I think when you look at winter twenty twenty to fall twenty twenty, you know, you've, you've had kids in school, winter's twenty twenty.
Is there like a last January to fall?
No, just fall of nineteen to fall of twenty.
Oh, okay, you're saying, sorry.
No, 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 well, that's what we're looking at. We're looking at winter twenty twenty to fall twenty twenty on this chart. I'd like to see what the fall nineteen to fall twenty is.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so, and, and.
Yeah.
Sir?
Thank you.
This is me, because I was reading in the reading summary, and you can tell that it's just, it's the kids that are learning, you know, in that first grade, you really are coming into learning, they're, they're starting to end loss in that first quarter of the grade, because you've got your readers that, you know, you asked, you know, they want a week, so.
Very, very good.
It's really something to see that there.
Those foundational skills that come in, especially that second half, people are in that, our, 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 and I have myself, I can't keep this out, um, because they weren't, as they weren't exposed, they didn't have access to their curriculum. So the young, the younger learners, the causation, that they're taking, I mean, they had huge tracks. Ours, they were, they were even the high, uh, and I had that I saw, pretty, the teachers with them, so, I think that, 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 those little learners that were at the facility, needing their foundation, are struggling. Uh, you know, just when the first phase schools allow, we're already seeing huge amounts of growth, just in our, in our private, on our in-assessments, that we do within the classroom, kind of daily basis, we're seeing huge amounts of growth. So we're very excited about our resources.
Okay.
Wonderful.
In the house? Can you?
All right. Mr. Walsh.
Hello, everybody. Everybody here? Um, so one of the things I'd like to do, uh, it'd be, Mr. Bailey, um, certainly I'd love to, one thing that I, that we just spoke through in the review of our eighth grade budget or final budget that we have, that mentioned in comparison to our audit figures. And I said that to you guys in my work report, but just wanted to kind of overview the highlights of it. Obviously, the goal is, is to get as close final budget as possible as possible, that gets us the best out of, to make informed decisions about, and gives us our best, to get the figures for preliminary budget. So, that being said, um, projected net operating income is actually about ninety-three thousand dollars in the last, well, we did that out of that in eighty-three. Our final fund balance was twenty point two six compared to our projected twenty-one point one nine. Um, so just looking at the numbers alone, yes, on the positive side, if you remember last, you know, the last year or before, we had talked about some of the funding that we were going to be receiving regarding these states' final, this, this full year funding budget. One of the things they did was they did a one-time reduction of per pupil foundation allowance, and then they offset the federal dollars for the one-time increase. Uh, the increase was two times the amount of reduction. Originally, we had anticipated that guidance would have us record those in the twenty-twenty one year, so those, that reduction and that increase was not included in our final budget budget. And we came up with guidance, as I had previously mentioned, that the reduction was accounted for in our year ended June thirty twenty twenty, which we just had, uh, received out of the statement. And then the increase, not the, not the one, it's, it, uh, recorded in our year ended June thirty twenty. So, I guess on a positive note, I know there is a variance, there's a difference, but I have to say that it's, um, the majority of that difference is made of, of that one having, uh, recorded. So, um, so the other things that, that's kind of going on right now is, it seems like every day we're getting new notifications of, uh, pending grants that we have, uh, coming available or possibly coming available, so keep an eye out for any communications coming up for grants. Um, Brad, Ryan, and I have had on a technology grant, um, through LLM products, Brad and Ryan are the workup plan, we get that submitted to, 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 to. Um, and Brad, uh, the system meeting that you had with Risa, um, good news, we had notified us that it looks like there's going to be some potential savings for us in this current, this year, that we'll be able to, um, save on some of the costs that are normally passed through the districts and the data, things like that. So don't have all the details on that yet. Obviously, when we do, I'll make sure you guys are aware of them, but that's good news. Um, in, in this occasion, we have been able on budget, not with Sandy Kava, regarding, um, JSRP, J-Air budget, things like that, her, her programs that she's director of. Um, spent a lot of time looking at the A-Air program. Um, as, as that program opened back up in August, I wanted to get in on, on where we stand on it, to make sure that we're still looking good budget-wise and to see how the activity's coming along. Currently, that program's still in a deficit position, um, but attendance is growing, it's increasing. September was our first full month of activity, really. August, we opened up in early August, and, and it just started coming back. So September was promising. Um, TAE is, uh, has a program that, I hope, looks like we're going to have more activity in there, so that's a good thing. And it's also submitted for a few grants for that, so if we get that, it really kind of helps write the ship there, and then for those, those months of loss revenue, that it is in our schools. So keep working with her. We were ready to meet monthly to look at those programs and make sure that we're, in the right direction. Um, and then lastly, just, um, I'm working on A-one budget adjustments, that will be ready for present in that meeting. Um, a lot of the information I have in right now, uh, some of the account numbers that should be collected on our, our next A-A, um, statement. So property taxes, we, we pretty much have a lot of the updated property tax statements. Just making sure that we've got all the COVID expenses updated, recorded properly, and in case in that year. So again, that will be, um, ready for National Committee, and then we, Finance Committee before that, so things in that, have a great present.
How soon do you think you'll be able to, with the Finance Committee on budgeting?
Uh, right, I talked about that today, and we were thinking maybe like the middle of November. So, uh, we're looking at, we can do that as a second poll, we can, however, that have a two, three weeks of, if, um, of, 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 of finance, and then have that, such, 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 such. And there's, it, it's really, the, the financial aspect of it, just from the state level and federal level, has been so volatile for, for the last couple months. It looks like finance is starting to kind of settle down, and I've got a good picture of where I think it's going to be for the next year. Um, still a lot of unknowns surrounding next year, but at least getting this stuff in for A-one, um, there'll be a lot of debates that have to discuss, a lot of funding, a lot of new fences and things like that, for, for the school. Um, but, yeah, looking forward to how, and then we'll be able to, um, the district board and the nation current statements, and, and, and.
Anything else for Mr. Walsh? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have anything you want to cover first time, Mr. Bailey? Hey, do you have anything to refer to for public? All right, uh, correspondence, um, all we have in there is the, the school log on us. Any questions, comments on that? All right, next up, I don't have any business. Uh, first, we have extended time to be in learning plan, the reconfirmation.
As part of the as part of the people option of the council part of it is that we actually turn on the annual monthly basis basically what we're looking at is make sure what we're doing is working uh and providing an instructional opportunity for all of our students uh first that's what we're currently doing uh as you know we are still considering the phase four of reopening um and then we are still in face-to-face insertion uh there's eighty eight percent of our students that are in district every day and then the other percent are virtually online so fully virtual um some of the things we look at is the health contracts that provide to us by the um state of county health care uh as it stated last Friday we moved up another bracket in their matrix where our very high level um so that was one step from the top that is over six categories if they were to move us into that the recommendation for the health care and it would be for all districts to go to fully virtual instruction um we do have another meeting with Dr. Perkins tomorrow um the numbers do continue to to increase and uh one positive we do have going for is probably why I say why is that schools do not seem to be transmission sites so there are a lot of transition there are a lot of positive tests but currently schools are not the place that they're identifying as um this the transmission sites where everybody's right so that is a positive for us that will continue uh the other thing the health department just looks at asking our hospitals and state their company and kind of uh compact tagging on those that are testing positive and both of those numbers currently still are pretty good for us so a lot of the cases are going up are about four percent positive that's great uh everything also is taking a really low level for saying that excuse me state their company uh so based on that the other part we look at here is the uh two-way interactions so basically all of our students face to face and online we're monitoring whether or not there are two two-way interactions per week uh two-way interaction would be something that a teacher addresses a certain student and there's a response uh which they basically basically have a ton of that uh so our students have eighty eight percent of our students face-to-face really goes well for our overall percentage of uh two-way interaction. The difficult part is getting the interaction with our students um to get a uh a response to a student on a phone call email text message. Students are great at communicating with the instructor so it's sort of an intuitive instructor which can give virtual instructor but when it comes to our mentor reaching out they're not getting the assistance or they're not deciding um in a good timeframe to consider a two-way interaction or having the um percentages are over ninety percent which is really good that takes an online and face-to-face but we hope to see them above ninety five percent. Our students are doing pretty well on the online programs but we still like to have an interaction for tracking their data um whatever it is I'm just employee or as a mentor for every online student so they're getting ninety two months of every one of the contact two-way of this feature of this app which is great um that allows still have that contact with them and providing assistance um and the K five level on the communication obviously is going to go to the parent so we work for the parent um the edutainment program is very nice for that you can send the program or the students write their edutainment and at least we track through that um parents have helped students get out of edutainment they see the message they're quick to respond so that that's helpful at six all level most likely still use edutainment uh six eight and the high school is the mission virtual so now you're trying to reach out to them directly through this account or a phone call uh and that's where we're seeing some of our high school kids that are doing fine but they don't answer their others uh so we'll continue to work on that uh I I everything that we are seeing right now like I said approximately that is since our students are having these interactions students are being successful uh based on the uh everything else that we are looking at is that students have a number of complications confirmed cases in our district we only have one confirmed case with Hawaii we had three that uh isolated because of exposure those numbers are really good even for all other county schools uh so in my recommendation I would continue to do as they're doing moving forward for the next thirty days which we are adding face-to-face instruction and the virtual option um as we've been doing from the beginning of the year any students that are identified as special on these they have accommodations for their I E Ps five fours S A Ts and we are providing that extra higher tier score opportunities.
All right, I'll look for a motion and then we can uh discuss further if we're
Making a motion to reconfirm the extended pattern need learning.
Court. We have motion by Mr. Curry supported by Mr. Foot. Any further court or comment?
I guess it's not a question but just a statement um yeah I think the staff's done a great job in in responding to this fact that there's a lot of schools that have had to go virtual or partially virtually more virtual than certainly we are so I know there's a lot of public scrutiny and all this stuff but stayed a court so hopefully we can stay at school.
I completely agree I just have mentioned that staff has done an amazing job there's no way we could be face-to-face if our staff can handle it and do everything they're doing taking out the national hall that's a huge thing to reach out to fifteen kids twice a week try to get in our community back activity I'm sure you guys all understand the the difficulty with that and the other thing is too is the score for our community we do have you know a lot of conversations going on there but to be honest we have almost ninety percent of our kids that face-to-face that is the highest in the company I mean that's a thought for our staff they're really going to keep our students in safe house have safety so I think it's true. For a two-way uh communication mountain has to be specific to a class they're taking so it could be as simple as this little kind of how are you reading I'm doing great thanks for reaching out I would help for one way or one interaction buddy but we are still missing the kids that take the time to to solve that.
Does this go either the nurse may contacted or they emailing or asking because we're offering however it is uh further to communication if there are students not communicating back to the nurse may contacted?
Yes, so the administration is not house quality to make sure that work is getting done um but yes mentors a lot of stuff here I haven't heard from so-and-so in a week or two administration takes their turn takes a judgment parent email phone call so we do basically what happens is you get that student one week and then it misses further and then we get back to that same situation when it hits the next then again when we check that things are going pretty well at all we'll know more about it as you know we do have had it through this semester or again this week so um I haven't turned to be able to put this way.
And their testing is all set and right so that they're hopefully keeping up with the kids that are in the classroom right?
Yeah, so we uh actually reached out to every online student beginning of the year those testing weeks and asked them to come in and test um elementary and all uh they wanted to to and the high school we got we got this student finishing up the years and it's um so there's just just a handful that did not he's coming in and testing so it's been a real good result.
Further questions? Here we have a motion by Mr. Curry supported by Mr. Foot we confirm the extended pattern need learning plan as presented all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carried. Next is I D P under full business is the assistant coaches um here we'll start the discussion sending out a list of coaches if you hear a motion for the Do you have your numbers?
Yeah, and if you guys have one for a lot of you on I mean if you're doing that on if you go ahead and to uh have this report handling and that for to show what coaches currently are in the M B A contract uh assistant coaches that the M B A has agreed to but we have not budgeted for or paid um in the past six seven years since it's been some time um basically what it comes down to is assistant varsity wrestling assistant varsity volleyball assistant varsity boys basketball and assistant varsity girls basketball are four positions that are currently in M B A and they are not paying we have assistant across country everybody repairing the family already obviously assistant football coach can be repaid so there's some of those positions already in there that are being paid um volleyball ending with districts in next week two weeks um you would not be looking at hiring that position to finish this year um so basically for just under uh ten thousand dollars to hire these assistant varsity wrestling assistant boys and girls basketball coaches those are being completed at a point where there is anyone that's got the tall staff system um but it would provide the assistance that we're looking for to support uh the students and teams through their seasons um all three of those positions would be winter coaches so they'd be starting uh with their next three weeks.
Does this go to the group criteria like after basketball money families on the team or from your assistant?
We we do not have any M B A contract that's specific on the assistant coaching positions in the past been a conversation with administration uh the athletic director usually with varsity coaches you know we've already got eight girls coming out what do we see on assistant uh position if the need is there so it's it's usually been determined by that by the director.
I know some of that territory around the board of possibilities is that they only have like a certain number of athletes on the team that have required that for our career.
Then we talked about paying a hundred dollars for students how looking at that again M B A was not willing at this time to sit down and renegotiate with it so basically if the board wanted to take on the financial responsibility of the assistant coaches those he he couldn't afford that right now it's in M B A contract who'd use theirs that was it?
Are your assistant coaches there at all in their time to be there or?
We have assistant coaches volunteering currently uh I don't think we have any we have assistant coaches that are volunteering this season.
Yes, that's good. We're uh we're not saying uh we're making sure we're this year more basketball uh did we had a uh assistant last year three three years and then girls basketball we had A D so our head coach is our and we did have a A D role for the children to be with us um and you guys saw we had we we had you guys saw we were
Just have a question about the spreadsheet um Adam what what's included in column D benefit um for these calculations?
That is the employer portion of the manager and then that is the R S portion the portion that goes to that employee returning out and then there is also the um the public U A L and all this is that while the school has per employee forty point five hundred percent to help offset that that large return expense at all.
So even a non-school employee will still receive as co of the return at that end?
Yeah, I think they through the one of the school system they are signing up the R S to pay for that.
Early all of our coaches are very improved now that's
All right, thank you. When was the last time sorry another question when was the last time any of these positions were paid at uh?
I I discussed with you two thousand and twelve I believe was when we we had that was a bunch of years ago we were cutting and those were some of the positions we looked at athletics and at that point we were trying to make sure everybody's cutting a percent say we're looking at twenty percent of our program you know for the athletics and we saw that we could do that without taking away from the kids too much and we tried to assist the coaches at that time.
How much did it pack?
The K eight
Yeah, I have a question.
Here are we seeing Oh, I'm P um well we had an opportunity to be getting for the all sports um I don't know what the decision required for winter sports is going to be. No comment? You're good.
Yeah, we have uh they say that uh the climate pause first for the whole time that some of the teams are leaving sold down here every time you have to start in charge to all the games of the ball game because they all they're all running sorry you're already the D D D has more I think at that time um schools are playing and I tell you I would definitely argue everywhere all those these schools and what's what's part of our need are your church and we cannot answer for uh state card company set on set setting on set and let's see um ourselves aren't we uh see a state here before but they have charged some good action uh the resource I would be on the board um I think that would plan to do that.
That being said even mine had there would be two days per play so it's still gonna be even if you can't work it's a long one.
If you don't want to put it level like we were going to have just go first go on to this time players you're like assistant coach. Uh that's something we can agree with as athletic for athletic based on something M B A can have um so we could have that conversation with the
I think in uh September Mr. Walsh you mentioned things called softball as well that that had
It's not currently in uh in M B A
He he it was written here with the already approved it was written in this this one report that that gives us
There is that was something we have negotiated. There is, that was something we'd have to negotiate.
Oh, this is good, I expect, I mean, looking at, uh, the, the bodies coming in, November, then finding, maybe I'll look at, uh, here and representation, uh, at this point.
Uh, it, I think it's something that we can, um, sustain for a few years. I think that we're in a position that we are, we would do that. I do agree with Mr. Pari that it should have some brackets around it. Um, you know, that is something, uh, boys basketball probably should have ten, twelve players, be my guess, before you get that, or to add an assistant, you know, referred to Mr. O'Conner's numbers. Um, same thing with, uh, girl basketball, I respect that with some brand was earned, I think it would be unofficial, and I think that our district would be able to do that.
Um, I, I certainly understand it and the value of an assistant coach, um, having that interest that I have is certainly, um, my only hesitation in this is that, um, you know, we just signed forward the contracts and we didn't give out the news, um, for the most part. And I would feel much more comfortable about moving forward with this, having gotten someone there. Um, with that said, you know, if you're comfortable with the budget, um, you know, going into that, if we're able to leave someone there, something that would be under consideration, so, um, I'll make a motion, uh, if there's no further discussion. Yeah, I'll make a motion then to hire, or approve the hiring, or, I mean, I'm just, I don't know.
May I make a fifteen days from next word?
Carter?
Okay, alright, if you, if you keep on hiring next word, you're right.
Okay, I'm gonna move to take action to budget for the hiring of assistant varsity coaches for wrestling. Assistant varsity coaches, or assistant varsity coach, boys basketball, assistant varsity girls basketball.
Motion by Ryan, supported by Mrs. O'Conner. Further discussion?
Just, just one thing, Mr. Ryan, I, I wouldn't put it in, I would not, I'm not attempting to amend the motion. Just a statement that, um, and maybe this is obvious, but if the numbers don't sustain for an assistant coach, for whatever reason, that that's worked out between the athletic director and assistant.
Hey, I, I agree, I agree a hundred percent. You know, I consider that it's, it's sport, you know, the last, unfortunately, it's a sport for the last few, four years. Had, had a JD over, so I, but I, but I think you put it there, it's, it's eighty, forty thousand. You have JD boys, you have varsity boys, others would be, let's say, and you can have nine boys or varsity. Well, I still have, I've got, I've got JD coaches, so. For, and then say others work for basketball, the last year, that is something I answered, right? But I recall the last, oh, sure, four years, you get that JD girl coach. And again, because of the, 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 nine girls, the varsity, I still remember, you know, you may want to say ten, use that out on the boys or the team, or sporting. My biggest concern, I would, is that if you had JD over that, oh, this year, uh, if I had one individual, third party, like I said, that, I'd be not at those JD assistant, not at JD coach. So the overall numbers that assess, you know, you're, I don't want to say, well, I have nine varsity girls, I have JD assistant, we have JD coach. And we have nobody for any type of support or skills, it's up to that. Whereas the JD boys, varsity boys, um, in the numbers, we decided that there's, it's, so, it's, so. But that's our JD assistant, motion eight, just to walk through. And that should be, is five, six, seven, four, eight, plus eight evenings, so we, 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 same time, we need to talk that, or something. So, but, 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 but actually, I'm just trying to say that I want to say was bad, but let's say I have a JD girl basketball motion. I don't want that, I know it's a very nice time, that, it's sound, it's, I think, it's, it's. But I sense I might put that out there.
Sweet. At that point, you wouldn't have a JD coach then, or you would have a varsity assistant varsity.
That's right.
Make sure.
There would be obviously plus, uh, uh, JD coach, so you have, uh, there is, that's still a couple.
Okay, I get it. Any further discussion? Alright, so the motion on the floor is to stay the action budget for the, 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 the coaches. By being supported by Mrs. O'Conner. You all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, next is item C is the twenty point one winner coaching recommendation.
Still the parapro.
Oh, actually. Yep, item C is the parapro contract, so I think, uh, I think there was some stuff included in, in Adam's notes. Okay.
Does that, yeah, just.
Yeah, yeah, I believe so.
Okay, so what, what information would you like to share, what you, what you want to know?
Um, I, if I may.
Yep.
At the last meeting, we discussed as we passed the raises for the custodians, I brought up the current start rate of ten thirty seven for a parapro and the high of twelve oh one being lower than the start for custodians and, and the high is the one to two year, or the high parapro, the twelve oh one is the one to two year rate for custodian. And it was mentioned that there was a significant amount of retirement, uh, or employee contribution. On top of that, let's just use the ten thirty seven rate. And I'm interested to know if, if a parapro's yearly, say their yearly, um, salary for their year paid for two thousand and eighteen was ten thousand dollars, how much would you expect on average in other certain elections they can take that are different? But how much on average would you expect that the employer, the school would have put into their retirement base on ten thousand dollars?
So you can, the retirement rate, um, for, for that position, as we had mentioned, it does vary by employee. They have some elections that they made, but you can use a generalized retirement, um, into the attribution. Um, you have that employee is about twenty six percent. Um, and then there's an additional fourteen point five one percent that is contributed. And that is that, that you, it's essentially the school, that employee's portion of that, that liability, based on the, 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 the first retirement system, again, going back to that large number that, that, uh, that all had mentioned in our audit. Every, we, the school is charged a percentage for every employee, um, to help offset that deficit. So that's our share of that, that essentially, so that's another fourteen point five percent. So you can say about forty percent.
So let me, let me restate the question, to be clear. If I'm a parapro, and my pay is ten thousand dollars for the year, regardless of the money that's set aside to pay it out, I'm going to stand there. Other than, I want to know what is the parapro getting in their paycheck? Employer contribution, not their contributions, because that's their money.
Sure.
Okay? What are we putting in their retirement that they get, that they require?
So specific to contribution into their retirement, that twenty six percent, so you would say about twenty six hundred dollars? Based on a ten thousand dollars in, say, uh, sale. And you have, if, if you're interested, if you're not, just let me know, like, you have the additional benefits that is included in the parapro contract, charging the contract that I'm insured as well?
I'm glad I was interested in that. Take it off, Mike. Hey, I still think it's, uh, I still think we need to look at that when, when the next budget conversation happens, uh, next month, and look at that. I think it's, uh, I think it's a shame that our parapros are paid less than our, not to take anything away from our custodians. They do a great job, they have a hard job, but for me, it's, it's not even.
And that's our intention too, but have a good wholesome, er, it's local districts, and the conversation that I have, and I have had, is about team finance, about thought, relationships, a little bit, yeah.
Okay.
Anything further on that, from work? Okay, next is, uh, new business. We have no, no policy fifty five seventeen dot oh two title nine regulations, uh, recent of the.
I'll make a motion to approve the first, the fifth, of the policy, five, five, seven, two, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
Okay, we have motion by Mrs. O'Connor, supported by Mrs. Boxton, to approve the first reading of sending a no policy fifty five seventeen dot oh two title nine regulations that was presented. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item B is no policy twenty two sixty six title nine regulations. The new non-discrimination on the basis of sex education programs are anticipated.
I'll make a motion approved. Approved for a reading of the old policy twenty two sixty six title nine regulations. New non-discrimination on the basis of sex education program activities, is that?
Okay, we have motion by Mr. Pari, supported by Mrs. O'Connor, to approve the first reading of the old policy twenty two sixty six. Uh, discussion?
I, I think I may have one of them, Mr. Q. Under coverage, um, the second paragraph under coverage at the top, the strikeout should include the word employee.
I have to turn it down, um, way down, and, um, the period is there, but there's another, with that tag along after that. It just didn't strike, I think, out this part of the, of this.
So the first one was under coverage?
Yes.
And you said employee was struck out?
No, employee shouldn't be struck out.
Okay. At the very end?
Yes.
And then there's just one part down, um, same type, yes, it's like that, it's going, and then it just. Well, it, yeah, it's farther down, like, of course, the very end of it, it was just, the period is there, but there's still like another tag, or this is a, it's, it's, sorry, one of them, I don't know.
Oh, I, I found it. It's towards the end, where it says end of option two, determination regarding responsibility. Point B, description of the procedural steps taken from the receipt of the formal complaint. Um, and then the word through is there, but then the rest of it is struck out, so I would imagine that it needs to stop at complaint. Description of the procedural steps taken from the receipt of the formal complaint, period.
Are there research, training, recording?
No, I guess, right, I, I, I'm, 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 I'm.
So, um, I take the, the two are, it's a little bit, we have, uh, we have, it's, we are sessioning for administration of all, apps, and, and, myself, uh, and then we will be using some, uh, working with research, but hopefully having some of them, their staff, be part of the, uh, team that helps through investigation, decision-making, hearing process. We will be doing that today, for that's why.
Okay, yeah, before we finish, I'm very specific, for the, the training we need to add, and, and, we need to train them before we finish approving the policy, or the policy in place of them.
I can, just, you got to train, that's, that's. Correct, yeah, that's, we are not alone from knowing going through that training, so that we're seeing how it can be offered.
It is, so the training is, is very specific, so we have to take theirs, and even adapt it for them.
Correct.
Yeah, I think the directives are, are really the key, maybe through just the directives, or pull out a lot of items that, that call your attention and focus on things, for example, under formal complaint, sexual harassment, the board should confirm or verify that a student's quote of conduct, pro, that against intention, it's a false report. So I'm not, I'm not sure if, uh, we can go back from this, or student quote of conduct, to see if that's, uh, that's referenced in there, that we, uh.
And basically, there's, there's four positions that are. And basically there's there's four positions that have to be identified that the meeting that went through is a lot better explained than our policy. But there's a Title Nine coordinator and that recommended recommendation to Yola, that should be two people. Case is an issue with the Title Nine coordinator. The other recommendation is trying to help them. You know, it works out well for us. That's why we did that position. They recommend that it's not superintendent. The other part of this is now employees should hold any of the two same roles in these. So you have coordinator, you have investigator, a decision maker, and an appeals officer. So talking with Yola or Rocco, you know, their recommendation is to find racist support or maybe district support to make this happen. Because I've spawned this, there's obviously defined somebody to fill all these roles that can't be the same person to be very difficult. So I've been content with research already to talk about, you know, obviously I would think that an investigator would probably be legal because if it gets to the Title Nine model, it's something that's serious. And the other thing that Yola was talking about is how Title Nine has changed so much that basically it's going to be handled by legal. We're still going to have to do our part, but there's going to be some legal involvement anyway. So those four positions is what we're looking at how to identify who can handle those positions. When you would reset tomorrow on further explanation.
On the timeline, you mentioned that it's even sixty days, the previous rest of timeline to resolve it. And they recommend that if you allow for an appeal, that delete the phrase, including resolving an appeal from that within the timeline. So that's something you may want to consider. I don't know if that's been discussed at all.
And that's not yet.
The other question I had was on the dismissal of a formal complaint. We have struck out the Title Nine coordinator. We dismissed the formal complaint. Do you have any feedback from Yola on that particular item? Would be under dismissal of formal complaint right after the timeline?
Yeah, and then that would probably answer your question.
I'm just wondering, are we not allowing dismissal? Is that why that struck out?
Basically, that level of title is for a court hearing party and Yola's in a board that has a legal background to get involved in Title Nine.
The society would be able to get all of that. Yeah, I think I would like to. To edit any timeline section as well. To allow for the appeal, to allow sufficient time for that as well.
Are you recommending one from sixty to ninety days?
Well, I think they say here in the draft note. Given this fairly aggressive timeline, the board they want to remove the appeal process from this timeline, i.e. delete the phrase, including resolving an appeal. Which would allow more time for potential use of informal resolution process.
If you have to start your control too, whether they're going to feel or not.
Right.
So we can hold them to sixty days as they're inside the field over time chasing time.
Yeah, I don't know if that means the field timeline is too wide open or if it starts over again in sixty days, if that's implied. Maybe you can get some recommendations from Yola on that word in there. Any further discussion? Here we have a motion by Mr. Parry supported by Mrs. O'Connor to approve the first reading of Noel policy twenty two sixty six Title Nine regulations. New non discrimination on the basis of sex and education programs or activities as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. IMC is the winter coaches recommendations for twenty twenty, twenty twenty one.
I would make a motion to accept the accept the winter coaches recommendations. As presented minus the eighth grade. Ladies basketball coach and the eighth grade. Boys basketball coach. Oh, sorry. And seventh grade.
Okay, we have motion by Mr. Cooks supported by Mr. Parry. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item B then, we have the junior high boys' basketball recommendation.
But now make a motion to approve the seventh and eighth grade. Boys basketball coaches as presented.
Motion by Mr. Cooks supported by Mrs. McHugh. Any further discussion? We'll take a roll call vote here for clarity.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Parry?
Yes.
Mrs. McHugh?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Connor?
The same.
Mrs. Bobstein?
The same.
Mrs. Durf?
Yes.
Okay, motion carried.
Make another motion to accept the recommendation for eighth grade girls' basketball as presented.
Okay, motion by Mr. Cooks. Supported by Mr. Parry. Through the girls' junior basketball coach. Any further discussion? That was eight. So this doesn't mean during the girls' basketball. All right, you will do a roll call here as well.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Parry?
Yes.
Mrs. McHugh?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Bobstein?
The same.
Mrs. Durf?
Yes.
Okay, motion carried. Next is a superintendent.
Minister, I'm forward to principals appreciate you much. We have two principals here that I appreciate very much for everything they do. Thank you so much for everything. I appreciate it. Thank you so much for everything. Their their leadership over the past last six months going through all the planning for this. The debates over what is the best for the students has been great. You know, they they keep me focused. When I kind of get on a tangent, they do bring me back and make sure that we're talking about what's interest those students and instruction. And they know that that's the important thing here. Dealing with all the headaches and everything that's going on right now and successes. You know, obviously the staff is looking up to them every day on any issue that comes up and they came a little bit of poison break. So I appreciate it. You guys are doing a tremendous job in this difficult, difficult times. Thank you. Adam and central office staff called and mentioned tonight, but the this is the best thought that Paul said we had ever had. With their firm and even what obviously we were trying to all be able to do it ever since I've been part of this and even before that. And he said he's never seen it so clean and accurate detail. So thank you to Adam and Laura and Sandy. They do an amazing job when it comes to this audit. They did nice of this way on ground at all this year. When we originally met, it was going to be used a little bit of virtual, but they still have to come on campus to talk about things to question and investigate. Never got to. Adam was able to send everything right to virtually. I think they completed in record time too. I think they had it done about three days. Usually it's five days face to face. So just a great job. Thank you to Adam. Mrs. O'Connor, thank you for your time with us and everything you've done committed your time with us. I appreciate your guidance, your support. And look forward to having you around and still providing that to us. So thank you. We talked a little bit earlier and Mr. Parry talked to me about our online programs and we've lost about thirteen kids to online programs over the last month. I did such a survey at least with all of our students that left and their families. I've only gotten seventeen responses. I mean, I know I know both parents. I'm trying to get some response of the ones that have left for another online program and that responded talked about the ease of use of the online program. They never tried our program. So basically they had something they may have seen somewhere else or more comfortable with. Other than that, I don't have the great answer why they left. Ingenuity, which is the program we use for our K eight students is being used out of five of seven districts in the county. So it's it's being used and supported by our county. Mrs. Hank has talked about the additional supplement that PathBlazers that comes with Ingenuity. Speaking as a parent, a student using it, my kindergarten student is using PathBlazers. She took a map assessment at the beginning of the year. We log in very easily to overcome the site. It's a cloud login. Basically use her student email address and her password that's the same for everything. Go in and click on map and it tells me exactly where she should be at and what it'll take to get to the next level. As a parent, not being so familiar with using all the programs out of the country, it is so easy and so beneficial. She can go on there. We get her started. She can sit in front of that screen for fifteen, twenty minutes as long as I can keep her focused and move through programs. So I really appreciate Ingenuity. The parents that have left for other programs, I don't think they have that. So that's the K eight. Michigan Virtual is the biggest thing in online programs. So I do not know that every school in our county is using this virtual for secondary students. Again, it's difficult. There's a lot of rigor. The students are expected to do a lot of work. So they may be choosing other programs that might not be as difficult for secondary level. So our programs I'm very confident with and the county seems to be very happy with as well. So I.
Now, I was trying to find is there something to entice them to run their program with services from the right here, you know, counseling.
Yeah, then we had another huge number which we never dealt with this. I think it was fifteen or seventeen home school this year. Basically, those families aren't comfortable with masking or uncomfortable with the procedures. They do not feel safe with that. We reached out to those families and said, hey, let us offer your online program. You know, we have a really good online program that you think that are very few. They didn't want computers either. So you know, there's this is really custom to do challenges for us. Somebody that's not happy with masks or not happy with our procedures and doesn't want to be online, their only other option is homeschool. So those two groups right there, you know, make up over thirty kids that we lost this year just for COVID reasons. So I would just point out that Ingeny, Ingenuity and you are very good. As you guys have heard, we talked about a little bit of COVID numbers that the county are facing. Every week we meet with Dr. Burpont and Justin Westmiller of Homeland Security and they give us their input and their thoughts. I've had to talk to health department several times this week and that's sorry, this weekend and then last week. And the information I'm getting is not all positive, unfortunately. We are at that age types as a county that Dr. Burpont's on to that tipping point. We don't do our duty as community numbers. She says it's going to skyrocket. And she fears that we're not going to do it. She doesn't think that without further guidance or restrictions that the community numbers in the county is going to continue to rise. Like I discussed earlier, that's very concerning and what it may do to our face to face instruction. So we will continue to do everything. We'll continue to, you know, follow through with all of our requirements and encourage everybody to do that outside of the school day. We talked to our students about keeping those procedures up at home or when you leave your house, wash your hands and that's enough. Keep your distance. So, you know, we can as a board continue to spread that lesson that it's very important for instruction, stay face to face at the local department. So we will continue to monitor that and I will share that information if it comes up. That is all I have for comments.
Right, I mentioned about our time. They mentioned that the schools have a really bad score so by all accounts, there be any consideration for that?
To be honest, I think that's the only reason we're still face to face is because they have not seen the transmission going through schools. Because every district is doing what's right. You know, you look around here, there's sand, sand, there's everything that we required to do, say, say. So that's the only reason in my eyes that we are still. If it goes to that next level, I don't know that you can continue to do that, being the health department. The other part with this too, the the human and health services from the Department of Ed, I'm sorry, you should be Department of Health and Human Services. That effect even emergency order has Friday. So between here and Friday, we get a lot of information of extension, a new emergency order. I don't know. I don't have a good feeling of where it's going. Having as part of the mask continuing, I assume so. But there hasn't been any talk at the state level for that.
Mr. Grinney, if they decide to take this back to the vertical only, where does that come from? Does that come from the health department now? Is that who's going to be taking that determination?
So it could come from the health department or it could come from the Department of Health and Human Services. If that could be stayed well, he has the authority, that director to issue emergency orders. Governor would have to have legislative support.
Right.
The state of the county, health department does not. If they make that ruling that they feel maybe it's just not necessary to elevate the campus. We know what's happening in middle school, whatever it may be. And she can say we can put it down. She's been great working with us. Everybody in the county has done at the table with her for about an hour every week and we have that conversation. You guys continue to do what you're doing. We've seen something at this school and you can make sure that's corrected a little bit and that's an achievement very toward the goal. We're very fortunate to not have any counties like that.
Brad, another subject for ninety, is the superintendent about to do the final, remember?
Yeah, so I'll provide to you the my final evidence and self evaluation. Yeah, so I'll provide you the, uh, my final evidence and self-evaluation two weeks before it's working. So that I'm, uh, second week of November, so I'll provide all that data for you guys. A week after, will we respond with any questions? Um, to you Dave, if you have sent your questions to, would you just submit to me? And I'd be here for our final email talk at that eleven p.m.
Anything else for Mr. Goodby? Uh, we'll move on to item twelve, which is the foreground table. I don't have anything, I have, I have to go down and, and also, Brad, to share that for us. Um, once again, thank you guys for all that you do, all the administrators here as well.
So also, I want to say, um, congratulations to the band for their, doing such a great job. Even, you know, having to perform and, you know, judge virtually and everything, you know? You know, they just, um, they're just wonderful, like, the programs they're doing. And then also, I didn't know, did we win our game today?
Yeah.
Good, great, I was hoping that was my band was excited, so.
I, I just echo again the band. Josh, actually, his band has been exceptional for many, many years. One of the most successful programs in the school.
And Josh has been a leader in the county for getting our students to be able to play as much as they have. So it went out, he contacted Dr. Burke Tompkins on, I understand, to have that outside. Just ensure they, they got the band boozers together, to, to make covers for the instruments. Um, and talk through all the things they have to do to allow the students to play, you know, to get outside. So Josh has been amazing. Um, and he was telling me all the hours that they missed out on. That's basically the marching is all they did for parades. That's where they get it, they, they practice it, practice it, and march in a break this year. So to, for them to get individual break, missing all of that, they were a short forty hours of band camp this year. So just everything against them, they still did individual break. So yes, he's amazing.
So I think if this layout, if it is special, if it's a meeting, especially political or corporate, um, if we, if you stay in here, maybe the screens that we use can, um, I heard you bring them there for the audience to go along. Um, and I don't think the, or the name is mentioned in my conferences, virtual conferences. Um, see, quite, it would come like a great representation. Um, but phenomenal, easy, easy to schedule. Um, and I probably got to revolve with my conferences for my kids in one hundred minutes. Without having to stand in line here. So I know some people prefer face to face, small meeting, not a time, ready to talk, um, students can, um, in some experience there right now, they respond it extremely well, but great job representation, I think, phenomenal presentation. And then another comment, I'm sure, you know, we've seen in the community, that a lot of people are making sure their board meetings, um, felt what was going on in different districts. And I, um, uh, quoted a lot of people to our website, that the reports, the reports, I think, is great, very, um, informative and actionable. Um, but there's no other district that I think, um, in the area that does something like that. And, um, you know, I had a whole people frustrated with the information they were getting, even needing to access agendas and notes for their board meetings. And, uh, my director of ours, and, uh, a lot of positive feedback on our reports that we provided there. So I think people agree we've got a comment on that.
All right, same thing, seven of them were, this is great. And all of us are happy to be back. I don't think it's happened for the last six months, with us in computers, and this is fantastic. Um, the only, like, nice, the nice part of where it all is, we, we got almost a hundred people participating in the board. Is there a way, if you bring the streams back and have your mic down, it's the center, could we still people dial in virtually?
Brian and I have talked about that, um, trying to figure out a way to still stream this. Um, basically, I don't know that they all hear through my mic. So we'd almost have to participate the same way where you'd have to unmute yourself for anybody listening, uh, by phone. Brian's looking at some different software, they will screen at night. Um, he is working on it, it's not as easy as I thought it'd be, like, the social security, the videos, but he is working on some of the details.
Okay.
All right, if there's nothing further, I'll vote for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, maybe.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Cook, supported by Mrs. McHugh, to adjourn the meeting at nine fifteen P M. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.